For the six parks is put in here. That would limit all flexibility for the council that has not made their final decision yet. So I was deliberately trying to be kind of vague about some may be appropriate for long-term preservation, others may not, assuming that that's kind of where the council is headed. Some will be and some won't, but I didn't want to necessarily tie their hands specifically.
Oh, I see, okay, in this specific document, okay.
So, so, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Carol.
So basically where the council is right now, they have not made a final decision about their 10-year preservation plan, they're still discussing that? Or has that actually been decided?
Well, they've sent us that direction, but they haven't seen the code amendments yet. So there will be another public hearing, and so the council, of course, just as you all can change your mind between the time of a public hearing and a final decision, still could make a different recommendation if they chose to do so. So I had been hesitant to say specifically about the parks in here and am recommending that it just be a little broader, so it doesn't tie the council's hands. The map, on the other hand, where the two parks on 175th are identified for long-term preservation, if the council were to change their mind on any of the parks, they could come back to the comprehensive plan without endangering the park during its 10-year preservation period and change the map. Do you see what I'm saying?
So they could rezone it?
They could change the comp plan map next year if they changed their mind, but if we have specific text in here, I think it just makes it a little more complicated in terms of what they can do with the zoning.
Okay, I guess I'm fine with that wiggle room, I see why it was, excuse me, it was written as such. Anybody else have any thoughts on that particular one? Then the other thing I had is on page, well, 59 of the full, excuse me, 59 of the full document, it's Housing Element 5.6, and it's, again, it's page 59 in the whole, it's under, what section, it's under?
It's on page Housing Element 5-6, you mentioned that.
Yeah, is that, there's a, excuse me, a map called Figure H7, and it talks about, towards the end there, and, you know, I certainly agree with everything that was included here, it talks about the concerns about the long park, long-term park maintenance and replacement of the infrastructure, and concerned about manufactured housing is offered, you know, relatively affordable housing when parks are closed, homeowners lose most of their investment, and I think there's a lot of truth there. I was thinking that it's, it's, there, it might also be appropriate to add a little bit about redevelopment offering opportunities to expand the number of multifamily housing units in the city, including affordable housing, because I think as written, it's, it doesn't, it doesn't paint, I don't think, the complete, the complete picture about the housing communities, manufactured housing communities, and what may become of them. So I guess I'm looking for maybe a little more balanced description of, in addition to the concerns, which are certainly, certainly very valid, but also include a little bit about the opportunities, as we discussed, you know, at length, about what could happen with redevelopment, again, with provisions for, providing opportunities for some current residents, so. So that was my thought there and my, silly.
So maybe something like future redevelopment could provide opportunities for additional housing units and increased or and with affordable housing requirements, something like that?
Yeah, I think that would be what I would, would advocate. Do you guys have any, just want to make a little more complete picture of that, on that, on that point, so.
Spend quite a bit of time talking about those different scenarios with the intention of protecting the residents that currently live in these parks. When eventually development comes, I think it's important to note that, you know, what the council decides on this is actually going to either promote or delay that development. It's not a decision that the Planning Commission gets to, but in the comprehensive plan, there's nothing in there about the landowner and their potential opportunities. Of course, if the council decides to put a moratorium for 10 years, that kind of limits their opportunities. That has not been decided yet.
Correct.
So, and is that what our public hearings in November will cover?
No. So the public hearing in November is only going to cover the amendments to the comprehensive plan.
Okay.
So that's the subject, and then the zoning, again, is still with the city council. So they'll make the final decisions there.
So the, so the public will come and comment, and then is there an opportunity for the Planning Commission to amend based on public comment?
Always.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, well, are you looking for suggested wording?
No, I think if, if the notion is to encapsulate the idea that future redevelopment could, of the parks, could provide additional housing units with affordability requirements, that's, I could write something, and then you guys could see it at the hearing, and then amend it at that point if you didn't like the amendment.
Yeah, I like what you're saying, I do, I would maybe ask that you add something about accommodating potentially current mobile home park residents, because that was, I know that was part of our recommendation, I don't know exactly how that'll play out for the council.
That actually is in the goals and policies.
Okay, so that part is actually already spelled out there?
Let me see if I can find it so that you can see it. It's on page 515, so just nine pages later, under Policy H313, "When displacement is unavoidable, encourage relocation assistance and replacement housing to be developed."
All right, that's fine.
So this first section is really background information, and then these are the-
Okay, as long as it's covered somewhere, I'm, I'm good.
Yeah.
So that's, that's, excuse me, that's all I had? Anybody else have any thoughts on, are we going to do that one that I-
Now we'll do natural environment. Okay, so I heard two changes, and I will make those changes, and then we'll bring it back for you to take a look at. Now I'm going to change notebooks. Okay, so this next set of amendments has to do, obviously, with the natural environment element, and this is a precursor to all of the critical area changes that you would be looking at over the next several weeks. So I'm not sure there is anything astonishing in here. We would have the new maps, which are still in draft, but should be finalized very soon, those generalized maps that go in the comprehensive plan. Under the geologically hazardous areas, there was some language added about tsunamis and sashes. And otherwise, I guess we, the most text is in the section on habitats. As you know, there was, you all had a very robust discussion about the habitats. So unless you have specific questions.
So the recommendations that we, you know, stated are incorporated in all these, this?
Well, this is just the comprehensive plan, so this is the broad policy language that supports the changes to the regulations that you have really reviewed. So hopefully, we've, they would be in sync with what you've told us so far, and when you get to the regulations, then you'll be going into the very specifics of the gap analysis and all those changes that you requested we make. So this is like the background, updating the background policy to support those regulations.
I think we have to defer to you, I would think, because-
Well, we tried to do it.
It's very specific on all this stuff, and until you're talking about it and you get in the weeds in it, that's, then you can, oh yeah, I remember that, but otherwise it's hard to remember all that stuff.
Okay.
Mr. Midland.
On the first page, under the Purpose section, minor point, you deleted the Growth Management Act, which I think is great in the title, and added state requirements, but as you can see, the second paragraph under that, we actually refer to federal requirements as well. Should we maybe make that title be federal and state requirements?
That would be fine. Yeah, I think we were thinking it was administered by ecology, but they are federal requirements.
I can see how you'd say that, but I got also seen-
Yeah, okay, so why don't we change that?
There are other federal requirements that may come into this that we don't cite here, just federal or state.
We will do it.
That's an easy change.
Everybody's-
That's an easy change.
Trying to make it easy.
Everyone's all right with that, I think, yeah, okay.
I had a couple of, excuse me, a couple, clarifications. One is on page, well, 82 in the full document, 4D11, under the Natural Environment sub-element at the-
4D11, okay.
At the bottom of that page, which has basically half a page of text and half blank, talks about Kenmore's Critical Area Regulations, and it talks about the year-round buffer around an active rookery, and it, and it takes out the, I guess, the 900-foot radius that was previously in there. Is there, is there, I mean, I guess I'm, this is maybe getting a little in the weeds, but is there a distinction between a year-round buffer and 900 feet? Is there a reason the actual, you know, distance was taken out?
The only reason, yeah, the only reason we changed that, the 900 feet was removed because, as you recall, the, the regulations now are recommending, I think it's 656, I don't know why so specific, but 656 feet. So we're, again, realizing that these buffers are changing, so we kind of backed off, again, because this is a policy document, we backed off the specific, but it is a year-round.
Right, okay, so that'll be reflected in?
In the regulations, the 656 feet, definitely.
Approximately, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, let's see, on page, on page 4D17, which is a few, I guess, six pages down there, so it, I see that we, we added the, on Bullet D at the very last point, they're going to designate and protect the following fish and wildlife habitats, importance habitat for bald eagles. Can you maybe refresh my memory on, was that part of our, our discussions, or was there another, you actually included that?
Right, that was included because-
Page 4D17, Carol.
Although the state doesn't, right, you'll recall that the state doesn't regulate bald eagle habitat anymore, that that, they're off the listed list, but that there was, it was bald and golden eagle, Amy can, yeah, there are federal rules, and, and where you all ended up in the regulations was that what you wanted was that a person, if they had a bald eagle nest on their property, they were going to submit a certificate to us confirming that they complied with the federal rules. So that's why it's here, because there still is some element of concern, even though the city's not regulating it.
Gotcha, okay.
Other than to make sure that they comply with the federal standards.
Okay, that's, it's coming back to me.
Okay.
Then on, oh, well, I guess, are we, is this, the geologic hazard features are there in part of this, on, oh geez, page, seven more pages in the full document, there's a, there's the map about the, on 4D21, I guess it, or maybe this is a whole nother section, gee, there's a geologic hazard features, there's a map there?
Correct.
Those are draft maps.
Right.
And these are draft maps, okay.
Correct.
So, well, my question was basically about, and maybe it's a little too much in the weeds for this discussion, but the floodplains are, how often are those reviewed in terms of, are there new delineations of what's in a floodplain and what's not?
Right, so the floodplain maps, the, the first place we look to for the mapping is, they're maps produced by FEMA, and the map that we have is super old.
Like how old, like?
I don't know, it's like the 1990s, maybe, and you, Amy, you correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I think it's that old, but they are in the process of updating that map, at least for the Sammamish River, and so there's a draft map in the regulations that we'll be referencing that's 2013. And, and the floodplains that are on the hydrologic features map, those are based on the 2013 mapping. We decided to, that we're pretty sure they're going to approve those maps, and we think it's more accurate information, so that updated floodplain information is incorporated in this hydrologic features map.
Good, okay, so are they generally going to be updated more frequently then? I mean, it seems like floodplains, you know, climate change, they may, they may be in need for more frequent update. I'm just, I'm mostly wondering how these will evolve over, you know, the 10 and 20 and 30?
Yeah, I'm not sure how often FEMA looks at their maps. We've been very interested in having them look at our Swamp Creek area particularly, but they haven't told us that they're starting on that. So there are other resources that we use, for example, and I can't think of them off the top of my head, but there's a list in the draft regulations that you guys will see at your next meeting, where, for example, if there were hydrologic studies that were done up on 73rd when the bridge up there was replaced, there's, there's a whole wealth of resources beyond these, they're called FIRM, F-I-R-M, maps, that can provide data and hopefully update data, even new development that goes in there. If they have to do a study, then that information is more resource for us to figure out where the floodplain is.
Just a question, as these maps are updated, is there any requirement or functionally as you're reviewing zoning or development that you would be required to either go to the most current map, or you refer to the map that's in the current comprehensive plan? How does, how does the regulation and development review?
Right, so, so we never look to the comprehensive plan map for the maps. We have a different set of, much like the zoning map, we have a different set of critical area maps, but those maps specifically state that the mapping on those maps is not the defining feature. The, the existence of the feature is what defines it for purposes of zoning. So for example, we've had cases where someone was mapped in a floodplain, but the truth of the matter was they were not in the floodplain. So that study that proved that they weren't in the floodplain exempts them from the regulations. On the other hand, if the FIRM map didn't show someone was in a floodplain, but we had information that showed that in fact that was now the floodplain, then that would be the controlling factor.
That's what I was trying to confirm, is that the, the mapping that's in the comprehensive plan doesn't drive regulations.
Correct, it's actually the presence of the feature.
You have to take into account more current studies, thank you.
Okay, good, so there, there is provisions for it.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to mean, especially if you can't update them when they're once a year, you could get really stuck into-
Well, yeah, yeah.
Right.
So it's the other way around.
Right, and the same with, the same with streams, wetlands, geologic hazards, all of the maps are a guidepost to say, we think this feature is here, and so then we pursue, and if studies are needed, then we follow that.
Good, thanks, well, I'm glad to hear it's, you know, updated on a, hopefully a more frequent, you know, basis in the, in the future.
I wouldn't hold my breath for the FIRM maps, but at least we have one more recent one.
Just, just for our clarification, since we are updating this based on what we do have available, is there any attempt on the city staff's part to contact FEMA or the federal agencies to get a more current, say, geological hazard features map?
Yeah, so FEMA doesn't have that, but King County does, and we absolutely, all the new LiDAR mapping, it's called LiDAR mapping.
Sure, yeah, I remember they were talking about that.
We have all of their new LiDAR mapping that we're using for geologic, and in fact, we're still waiting for some information there.
Okay.
As far as wetlands and streams, we had an intern this past year who had an exhaustive project of going back to 2003 and going through every file that had a critical area in it, finding the maps of the feature, figuring out what characteristics of the feature were important, logging it all into a database, which then was used to create the new wetland and stream maps. So we have tried to be totally comprehensive in terms of what information we have, so that we have the most recent information.
So you've compiled the data, but did they actually send anyone physically into the field to look at that?
So that data came from reports that were done by people in the field.
Okay.
So it was, for example, a private development, and they hired someone to go delineate the wetland, so that information was then given to us, and that's the information that was added to the map.
I have a nephew who's a hydrologist for Snohomish County, so I've been picking his brain a little bit.
Yeah, that's a good question.
Any more questions or thoughts on the, the comprehensive plan amendments from my colleagues here? Anything more we should do tonight, Lori, on these?
Not with the comprehensive plan amendments, so the next step is to hold a public hearing, and so that's scheduled for November 6th. Again, we're trying to meet this end-of-the-year deadline, so you'll hold your public hearing and hopefully that evening make your final recommendations, and then it would turn around almost immediately, within a couple of weeks, and go to the council for them to look at the comp plan amendments, in the context of dealing with the zoning changes, both for the mobile home parks and for the critical areas next spring. So, and, and the council did extend the moratorium, the six-month moratorium to April recently, so to give them time to work through the issues.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
So I guess we're on, yeah, on to the Critical Areas and Shoreline Master Program amendments.
Right, well, Amy is here, and what we wanted to do tonight was to kind of go over what we heard at, you know, we held two public forums on September 25th, and then the public open house, many of you were there, and you may have thoughts about what you heard at the open house. So Amy's going to give kind of a summary of those activities, and then, then we'll start with our first set of actual amendments. So these amendments were crafted off of the gap analysis, but it's putting everything that was in the gap analysis actually into the code, so it's easier to read. You can see the underline and strike-throughs of changes, and this first batch is sort of the general provisions and wetlands. And then next time, we'll have streams, fish and wildlife habitats, and geologically hazardous areas. That's the next batch that you'll be seeing for your November 6th meeting. Okay, so with that, I'll turn it over to Amy.
All right, so I think in your packets you should have summaries that were prepared after each of the two focus groups that were held, so we can talk maybe just quickly or see if you have any questions about the first one, which was for public facility and utility review and performance standards. And we had a very good group of agency folks and some other public agency representatives, a school district, wastewater, parks from the city, and had a really good conversation. I think we ended up with a strategy for moving forward, although based on some feedback we've heard from the agencies, we still have a, a bit of work to do to help them understand why we need this PAUE and how it's going to work. So we have a work cut out for us, but I think it was a really good discussion, and I'm hopeful that in the end we will have made some substantial progress and be able to put together something that will work for the city and will not be contested. Any specific questions about that focus group?
I was just curious about what mitigation sequencing is, I, I understand the words, but just not sure exactly how that, what that means in practice.
It mean, it's, so it's basically a sequence of steps that you have to follow when you're designing any kind of a project that might impact critical areas or buffers, and it just starts with a void. So thinking for any type of project, how you could avoid the critical area and its buffer, and then sort of moving down the list, then if you can't avoid the buffer or the critical area, can, how can you minimize the impacts on it? And then if you can't minimize, or you've done all you can minimizing, but there's still remaining impacts left, then how you would mitigate or compensate for those impacts? So that's just sort of the sequence. And I think one of the issues that came up several times in our discussion with the agencies was that they weren't understanding that this PAUE that we're proposing does not eliminate the requirement for applicants to go through a mitigation sequencing process and do what they can to first avoid, minimize, and mitigate. But for a variety of reasons, the folks that are pursuing a PAUE are in situations where they can only mitigate or avoid and minimize so far, and then the rest is going to have to be mitigation and departing from some of the, the standard processes that are allowed in the critical areas regulations. So we talked about needing to do, that we're going to make sure that applicants have kind of done a, a first round of mitigation sequencing and developing their master plans, like for a, a parks department or a school district, that they've done some mitigation sequencing just in picking sites or thinking about where a school's going to go or a park process. And then that would be the first level, and then when they get to actually developing a school or a park project on that selected site, again, going through kind of mitigation sequencing for that site, and then demonstrating very clearly to the state how you went through that process and what the substantive outcomes were.
Yeah, I was just going to remind everyone about why the PAUE was important and why we're interested in putting that regulation back in. So we had that regulation for many years, and we used it for different things. For example, when SR 522 had to be expanded, we had a critical area issue that we could not avoid. There was no way to avoid it. With, you know, it's a state highway, it, the lanes had to go where the lanes had to go, the facility was pre-existing. Similarly, a school district might need some relief, they have a already purchased piece of property, maybe their field is close to a stream or a wetland, Kenmore Junior High, for example, they can't pick up and move, they may not be able to avoid the impact. And what happened was that there was a concern that really that rule was written only for utilities, linear utilities, and, and that's kind of the decision, the, the interpretation that got us into trouble, because all of a sudden that, that area of the code was only to be used for utilities, like a communication line, or an, you know, electrical line, or who knows what, but a sewer main. And so, so all of a sudden, there was no opportunity to talk about other kinds of facilities that provide significant public benefits, but they didn't have a way to get out of these rules that you really couldn't accommodate very easily. So that's the push for going back to having a public agency and utility exception, that's why we're looking at it, that's why we're talking with the agencies about it, and trying to come to some agreement on when it would be acceptable.
So following up on that, there was note that you had a proposal, but it was, it was turned down to, to expand it from, if I read this right, on page 7 of, of that section. So would this new proposal then have to pass muster with, what is it, the Growth Management Hearings Board?
No, the, the new proposal, the concern with the proposal that was done a few years ago was that the, the Growth Management Hearings Board felt that we had not adequately assessed best available- available science and if this rule was to be implemented, could it be justified through best available science? So what we are trying to do and why we're meeting with the agencies, why there was a forum, is to say, what, how can we make best available science part of this regulation so that you're, everyone is comfortable with it? It doesn't have to go back to the Growth Management Hearings Board. That would only happen if someone appealed it. But it does need to pass muster with the agencies and, and incidentally, this exception, the PAUE, is not an exception that is allowable or permissible in the shoreline jurisdiction. So it doesn't even apply in the shoreline jurisdiction, although the whole discussion about when is it appropriate for a public agency to do something in a critical area or by a critical area could be helpful in the shoreline to give us some guidance on when is, you know, what type of mitigation is preferred, what standards should be, you be looking at and that kind of thing.
So it's have to pass, you say pass muster with all the agencies that could potentially be affected?
No.
Schools, fire districts?
Yeah, no, they, they don't have to, they don't have to look at it.
Formally approve it.
The Growth Management Hearings Board, it, it doesn't have to go to the Growth Management Hearings Board. Ecology will certainly be looking at it. And commerce, right?
Okay. Well, thanks for that context. Anybody have any?
Just a maybe mark comment, something you can respond to, but think about, well, as I was thinking about this, you gave a good example of the junior high school. You could put a plan in place or a proposal in place for a junior high school and then also have growth projections that say that you're going to need something much larger than what you're building 10 or 15 years down the line. So I'm worried about the almost inevitability of getting into a situation where you're, you're going to come up against the fact that you have a constraint here that as you grow, you're going to grow into and against that constraint. How do you deal with that, particularly in someplace like Kenmore, which is likely to see some of that pressure, given our, our limited land availability? You know, just looking at those maps and seeing where the constraints are. If you don't take that into account somehow in the original review and plan for the junior high school or the road or something else, are we setting ourselves up for the inevitability of that sort of problem? So how do you or can you require or have that sort of review as part of the initial review and approval of the project?
Well, it would always be part of the initial review and approval. The problem is that many of these facilities already exist, so we're well past approval stage. And in those cases, that is why this particular regulation is so critical because the message is, we can't avoid it. You know, the facility has to get bigger. It is a very important public facility. So how can we mitigate it, consider options, address it in a way that allows both thing, good things to happen? You somehow have enhanced the critical area, but also allowed the school to get bigger.
But given the situation we're in, the real emphasis then, the time needs to be spent on thinking through what the potential mitigation steps are.
Right.
Given just the level of development we're at today.
And how to show the agencies that you've thoughtfully gone through those other avoid and minimize steps to the extent practicable. I've worked on a number of school projects and a lot of them, they've got the, that are remodels and that sort of thing. And my kids go to schools that just got remodeled and they don't necessarily get bigger, but they need to use the, all the square footage they've already got and can't suddenly give any up to recover buffers. And so they're doing a lot of going up. I think my kids are in a two-story building and last year they were in one-story building. So I think those kinds of things are happening, but it's more of the, the pressure to restore the buffer and, oh, now you're rebuilding the school, so now you need to come into conformance and that means re-vegetate all these 150-foot buffers. Well, then you'd end up with like this little, I don't know, 20-story school building that's like this big. So, that's kind of, I think, where we're seeing it. But you're right, this is not really intended for solutions for new schools and then figuring out how to kind of use the PAUE later when you, if you know you need to get bigger.
Well, I think this is actually part and parcel with the whole increased density discussion. If you're going to increase housing density, you're also going to increase your public utility density and these things are going to run into each other as we go forward. How you resolve those, I think is probably what we're talking about here or what's the best case we can apply to resolve those, realizing that you're not going to be able to keep up a sum zero. That it's not, as you increase the density on both sides, something's going to have to give. And so I, we could talk about mitigation, but I really worry about what are the limits of it? At some point, we have to accept the fact that you're not going to be able to mitigate your way out of these.
Right.
If you're, if solutions.
And I think that's another reason why having other tools, mitigation tools, like the banks or in-loofy programs is also going to be kind of important, more so in the long term, as you find that you can't, there's no way to compensate or mitigate on your site because you need every single square foot just to serve the students in the now larger community. So, it's all connected.
I guess my comment is, all you have to do, if you grew up in Seattle, is look at how, even though the Growth Management Act intended to accommodate this burgeoning population, it didn't accommodate the problems, the unintended consequences of growth and we're struggling, you know, to deal with that. But, you know, as best as you're able to write these steps down, it just shows that you've taken the time to have the conversation prior to what you can see coming down the pike. And then it, it hopefully helps to preserve public trust with public entities, agencies, school districts, you know, utilities, everything. And it's the right thing to do.
Yeah. And I think what was, the agencies learned a lot, I think, about how schools do planning and parks, is they didn't realize, for example, that the school district, before it proposes a new school or a school remodel, it's gone through a very extensive planning process at a high level and has probably looked at like 16 properties, trying to figure out where to put the thing and how to have the least amount of impacts and cost and balance all those things. And so, that's one of the things that we were going to put in, in some way into the regulations, is that the, that first kind of mitigation sequencing layer that folks have to document their early process of doing that large-scale planning and research and that sort of thing before you even came to the site that you're at. And hopefully that will provide comfort to the agencies and also demonstrate to the community that they have put a lot of thought in before they just decided we need this piece of property right here.
Because it can't really foresee the disruption in the way we do education now. That is coming. We're aware of it. We just don't know what the impact is going to be, but it, it will change everything.
Well, it's interesting you say that because I think we can actually look at what the experience has been in other cities, particularly as close to us as Seattle.
Sure.
And we're going to face a lot of the same trade-offs that any city, Seattle being an example, has had to face. Do you want your kids to go to school in your neighborhood? Or do you want to consolidate them into a larger somewhere else?
Exactly, yeah.
That's a trade-off.
Right.
And those are decisions that you're not going to address as part of a mitigation strategy in a development request.
Right.
And that's, I guess, where I'm really backing this back up to a little higher level. That's where that level of community engagement and decision-making gets really hard. I mean, look at what's happened in Seattle over the years. I mean, you had like ballards just been up in arms because you're taking away my school.
Exactly.
But, you know, you, then how do you deal with the fact that you've got less and less land to deal with that? And you're also changing your zoning requirements to increase the density, so you're actually creating the situation where there's going to be more kids and you're going to outgrow the facilities you've got.
Mm-hmm.
But I think there's a, there's the urban development quandary here that everybody faces at some point. Lots of people have already faced it. Kenmore's looking, I think, within the next five to 10 years at a repeat of that. So, I don't, as I go, I don't think we have a way to solve this problem or address this problem through the mitigation strategies we're talking about here today. But I kind of look at this and say, okay, yeah, but where we're going to end up is, this is not going to solve the problem. But I think we, we may be able to satisfy the agencies and we may be able to have a short-term reassurance to the community, but long-term, this is what we're doing. This is what we're doing to ourselves.
You can't foresee some of those things and again, how people do education in the future may look very different. I mean, those, think about shopping. I mean, I just was at Northgate Mont, grew up in Seattle, it's the first shopping center in the whole nation and it's going to be no more in five years. They will totally redevelop that piece of property and people aren't going to shop there anymore like they do now. So, I know education and our other community activities are different than shopping, but think about how shopping has been disrupted by something else wonderful that we all use, Amazon. You know, it's, it's, we can't really foresee everything that's going to happen in the brick and mortar world that these regulations, but the land is scarce, it's, we're not going to get any more of that, so we have to protect it, protect how we use it and the steps that we take to develop it. And definitely Kenmore will see our day. We, all you have to do is drive to Kirkland. We're tiny. We often get overlooked in those, you know, development bubble bursts of activity, but you can see that we need to prepare for that.
Very good discussion. I, I had a maybe a little more prosaic question about the Puget Sound Energy doing a lot of, they've done a lot of upgrades to their system in Kenmore in the last, I guess, at least couple of years and maybe it's still ongoing. Have they pursued any, any, any exceptions to critical areas? And if so, is there any lessons from that that the city could learn to maybe apply and how, how this new process or this revised process will, will work?
Yeah, they, they actually did do a project that replaced a major transmission corridor across the Swamp Creek Wetland. And that was, I believe, processed as a PAUE because it met the standard of a utility, which we're holding on to.
Yeah, right.
And I don't know about lessons learned other than at the open house. One of the comments you'll read is that one of the attendees had commented that they were concerned that follow-through, that if a PAUE was granted, that the city should be making sure that there was like a final inspection of the facility to be sure they had done it correctly. And I think that came up because when PSE did that, they actually used the wrong kind of poles. They had some horrible contaminant in there and they, they had to go back in, pull out all the poles and replace them. So, anyway. But I don't think that was unique to PAUE. I think that's probably the case with any kind of a development, the follow-through to make sure it's done correctly.
Which is something the city would normally do anyways, correct? Or is there a follow-up? I mean, is that a normal course of business for the city to follow up and make sure the acceptance is followed that way? Okay.
Right. And I'm not even sure the city, whether the city discovered that or whether Puget, PSE actually found that somehow they had made the mistake. I, I don't know the history of that.
Right. Well, there's a trade-off there too. I mean, obviously, we all appreciate having fewer outages, which I think has been the, you know, the statistical trend in recent years. So, again, it's, there is a public, a public interest in, in, in that. Okay, thank you.
Do you want to move on to the Samamish River focus group?
Yeah.
Okay. So, the first one had a lot more philosophical type discussions in it. The Samamish River docks and buffer ones is a lot more practical. So we've got a lot of very good specific direction from particularly contractors as well as agency input, like from Fish and Wildlife and the Corps, to help us fine-tune the proposed revisions to the dock regulations in particular. So, we're going to be working with all of the feedback that they gave us on that front. I don't know that there's anything terribly interesting or surprising in there. When it comes to the buffers, I think in general, the takeaway message was that yes, it definitely makes sense to look at the Samamish River and look at the existing conditions and, you know, do something better than 150 for everybody buffer. But there, I think there was a, some pressure and it makes sense to me to do a little bit more splitting than what I did. I had kind of two zones and I think they'd like us to take a much closer look at the existing conditions and see if we can nail that down a little finer so that, that the proposed buffer numbers fit different reaches better. So we're going to be doing that and we'll have that in the next second, third, third meeting?
The third.
The third meeting, so we'll have some new numbers there. Otherwise, I think that was kind of the big discussion really.
I, I might just jump in and say, with both forums, what we had said was that as we crafted the new standards, drafted them, we would provide them back to these folks who gave up all this time to give us their feedback so we could, you know, make sure we had captured their ideas. So you'll see, for example, when we get to the wetlands rules tonight, that the PAUE section is grayed out because we're going to be doing that and then sending it out to the agencies for their review before we bring it back to you.
Any other kind of questions or thoughts about Samamish River specifically?
I had, I had one, one sort of general one and one maybe a little more specific. So I know there was information here and it makes a lot of sense about splitting up the, the standards for the river and Lake Washington and are there any, are there any downsides to that? I think that was one of the questions that was raised about, you know, the, the down, potential downsides of, of having sort of those split standards versus the, you know, the more uniform one. I mean, the information makes it seem like it, it, it's a really good idea, especially, you know, the different water.
Right.
Conditions, that, that all makes a lot of sense, but I'm just wondering if there's other, other.
I, I can't think of any downsides myself. And I don't know if implementation-wise, I think it's fairly straightforward. We're going to create a map that'll clearly show from this parcel, this parcel gets this buffer and this parcel to that parcel, so there's not going to be any ambiguity. I think when you split things out a little bit, then maybe there's people who are on one side of that line, they're going to be like, I wish I had that buffer. But that's going to probably happen no matter what.
I, I will say that, that I think the reason that the agencies wanted the, the segments of the river to be smaller was because if, you know, the finer you split that, the more reflective of the buffer you can be. So for example, they didn't want a big stretch suddenly reduced to 50 feet if there were three houses down at the end of that stretch that were set back at 100 feet. They're like, well, those people should have 100-foot buffer so that we're not losing any more buffer than we already have. So that was, I think, the reason that they.
Yeah, yeah.
So the downside could be if you didn't do it finely enough, you could.
And you don't want to do it too fine either. We don't want a separate buffer for every single parcel either. So it's going to be just a matter of sort of looking for patterns and trends and figuring out some natural points to break it. We started with breaking it at the zoning because those were two very clear zones, so that's an easy step. And then after that, it gets a little trickier and we'll be looking at things like lot depth and what's the potential and the existing condition, obviously. So, we'll, we'll see where we land with that.
Right.
Okay. Do we have any sense of what we're considering or are we looking at what, for instance, Bothell's done upstream in terms of.
Yeah.
Consistent or, consistent is the wrong word. Are we doing the same thing?
Similar, we're going to be doing a similar process. So I worked on Bothell's SMP and we did several different residential zones based on their specific local conditions. I don't think they had the, quite as broad a variability as you do in, in your residential waterfront development, but, and similar to the Kirkland. Kirkland, I think I mentioned a few meetings back, I worked on that one as well and I think we ended up with like 15 different residential zones because they had very strong patterns in different areas. Some areas that had just lots of huge deep parcels and some areas that, that residences had to be like right up front because then there was a steep slope behind them. Plus, they annexed that whole, what's that area called? Finn Hill area and then that was just like a whole nother type of community and, yeah. So, we did that for Kirkland. So this is not unusual to split things out and I think it is an advantage in every way to the property owner in terms of particularly those that are not 150 feet back and are already 10 feet or 50 feet within that buffer, so.
One more question about the, the, you know, the, the meeting, the sort of the composition. And I, I, I know there was the intention to have the, you know, the, the agencies be largely involved. And I guess there's one consultant here. It sounds like he does shoring design. I guess I'm wondering what's the process? And I'm sure that comes at some point for involving the landowners.
Yeah.
In terms of
We consider that.
this and crafting. And so I'm, I'm wondering and hoping, and I'm sure there will be opportunities for them to, you know, weigh in individually or collectively or however they choose.
I think we, we invited to, before I talk about the landowners, we invited three different contractors as well and only one accepted.
Oh, this, this gentleman, this consultant?
Greg Ashley.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right. The, the consultants do a lot of the work for the private property owners. You know, they hire somebody to do their docks or whatever. And so
Representative.
Right, of the interests of the private
Right.
landowners. And so we had, as Amy said, we invited three different groups, but only the one attended. And, and that particular gentleman has been at several of your meetings.
Yeah, I think he's the only one who was here for the first six or something like that. And he got, he provided very good feedback. And there was even a question where we got a different message from the meeting and I shot him a, can you clarify what you meant? And he shot me back a diagram and this is what he got approved. And it's like, oh, okay. And so we'll be able to take that and move forward with a fair amount of confidence that that's something that not only he would like and presumably property owners would like, but it's actually permissible, which in the end is a, a good thing to have in your code. Yeah.
Is there a plan at, at some point to, I know you do this for other, like, public hearings, to, to notify, I guess, all the potential, you know, people who own land on, that would potentially be affected on the river and
Yeah, we
at what stage does that happen?
So we had not planned to do that. The, the critical area project is broad. And as you can imagine, there are hundreds and hundreds of property owners. And we can't even tell exactly where they are. Sammamish River is easier, but with the wetlands and streams. So that's why we advertised the open house the way we did. You know, we had a ad in the newspaper. There was actually a story. We sent it out over all of our social media. We posted flyers. So we felt like we had done a good job advertising that to the community rather than a direct mail effort. So that was our perspective on it.
From the folks I talked to at the open house, it seemed like we did get a good spattering of folks that were actually waterfront property owners, so it seems to have been effective.
I thought it was very well attended.
I did too.
And I was actually shocked. I, I'm working on a civic engagement project on the east side. And to get citizens and people that your policy or recommendations affect to actually engage prior to making these decisions, it's kind of amazing that you've got people to come. So it tells you something about the atmosphere and the culture of Kenmore is, you know, we, you, you've done a good job of demonstrating, I think, to the public that you want civic engagement, but then you also have people that are willing to take their time and come, so. The, the other comment I might make about engagement is that, for example, we had a flyer about the open house up on our permit counter. And now every person who comes to the permit counter who's thinking of applying for a permit is advised that we're doing this, you know, if they have a critical area, they're advised that we're doing this update, encouraged. I've had a number of people call me and say, I'm in this stage of the process. What's your timing? And then what we do with those folks is we add them to our list, so then they get everything that you guys get. So we're trying to keep the, you know, more and more people engaged.
And you're, I presume you'll do that on citywide communications, you know, your newsletter and
Oh, totally. Yeah.
Okay. Good. Well, it sounds like you're doing, doing good stuff and reaching out. That's, that was really my, my, my thought here, so.
So I guess we were going to just talk a little bit about the open house, which we've kind of just done. So like you already said, I thought it was amazingly well attended. I've been to a lot of these critical areas regs and SMP things and you were lucky to get like three people to go in. So that was amazing. And people were really engaged, had really good constructive comments and thoughtful questions. And I think we were busy at every single board the whole time and the hour and a half flew by. So we're going to be incorporating input we got and questions we got as well into our regulations revision proposals. So unless there's other questions, I think that kind of sums up our public outreach efforts this past month. Okay. And then what's next on our agenda?
So if we're finished with that topic, we'll move right into the first set of regulations. So as I mentioned, the, the two segments we're looking at tonight are really the purpose and sort of the general, the general regulations and then the specifics for wetlands. So what we tried to do was to take the gap analysis and plug in the recommended changes. And then also, having heard your feedback on the gap analysis, if you had requested changes or you had certain things that you were looking for, plug those in as well. So rather than go through page by page, I know it's a lot of material.
Yeah.
Hopefully you have questions and we can try to answer those and make adjustments as need be.
Lauren, sorry, can you tell me which page that I?
You know, I, my version does not have the, all the numbers.
That's, uh, let's see.
If, it is, it's on the laptop if you want to pull it up. And it's probably the second, here, I'll confirm. Okay. Oh, yeah. So here are the page numbers.
Is the whole packet numbered?
Nope, but it's not numbered with that.
Right, right, right. So I think that was attachment.
Attachment B E. And it says attachment five.
Okay. Got it.
Okay.
There's a lot of attachments.
There were a lot of attachments.
I granted, I just want to make sure I was on the right.
So I, again, I wasn't intending to go page by page. I think that'll take a super long time, but we can do it that way if you'd prefer. And otherwise, we'll just do it by exception so you can raise, as we've done with all these other things, raise issues or questions.
Does anybody have any thoughts, comments, questions on this section?
And we also got some really good comments from other staff members that have kind of also been incorporated into here as well. I think from Development Services and, and Parks.
Public Works.
Oh, Public Works, yeah.
Yeah, I guess I had a couple, a couple of things here on page, it looks like page five here under eighteen point five, five point zero nine zero at the subsection D. And it talks about areas adjacent to critical areas subject to regulation. And it talks about bald eagle nests. And again, it's, goes from a half mile to, I can't even read it here, a much, six hundred and sixty feet. That's a, you know, seventy-five percent if I, my math is right on that. Is there a
Yeah.
What's, what's behind that?
Yeah, the origin of that number was from the, I think, the Bald and Golden Eagle Protection Act, so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so D, the delisting at the state and federal level, that half mile distance was lost.
Oh.
And now we have the six hundred and sixty.
Under federal, under federal.
Right. And now we just have this one law remaining that kind of governs the bald eagle. Or there's a couple others, but this is the primary one. And six hundred and sixty feet is the number that's included in, in those.
So we basically were updating our comprehensive codes to reflect what currently is on the books federally.
Right, to provide a link to that process.
Yeah.
And, yeah.
And then that would also apply to the, the Heron regrey buffer too.
Yes, we had some new science and new recommendations from the state that changed the number on, on that particular species. And so that's why we changed that one.
Okay.
It was a twenty twelve study.
And just one other thing, and that was on the fencing on page, what is that, page nine? And of this, it talks about required permanent fence can be one of, it looks like two different, two different types. And, and who, who makes that choice? In terms of what kind of fencing, is it up to the, the land, landowner or?
Yeah.
I think they would make the proposal in their application materials for whichever fence.
Okay, and the city has to approve it? Or they just have to notice one or the other?
Mm-hmm.
It's their, their choice. And there's, is there any sort of environmental difference between those two choices? Is there any?
There's probably pros and cons to either one. The vegetation, I think the environmental concern is will it be maintained? And will it thrive and grow and what happens if you don't water it? And then you end up with no fence. Wood and split rail are, are generally not good barriers for basketballs and children and baseballs and those types of things. Whereas a thorny rose fence might be a little bit more of a barrier. So I think they're, they're each good for in different settings probably. And then it'll be up to, yeah, so I think C maintenance is added to ensure, one of the things to ensure long-term maintenance. So I think that there'll be a little bit of a, a hook to make sure that the vegetation buffer in particular doesn't fail.
Okay. Okay, thanks. Anybody else have any?
Did we go over these earlier?
Yeah, a lot of these are in the gap analysis as kind of our recommendation. And then some of those you provided, you're like, yes, sounds good, sounds good. And others, you're like, well, let's talk about this more and propose tweaks. And so that language is now stuck into here as well as additional feedback we receive from other city staff or other public input. But a lot of this you've seen verbatim before.
Or any more thoughts? What do you need, you need anything else?
So I don't need anything from you at this point. So what we'll be doing, as I said, is bringing this material forward in batches. So you'll see two more batches at your November meetings. And then we're hopeful that you may even be ready to hold a public hearing your first meeting in December. If you are not ready for that, then we would have to delay it until next year. But I wouldn't be surprised if, if we could get there. Probably the biggest chunk is the shoreline rules. And that's one of the ones that you'll see at your second meeting in November.
Okay.
What's this one with the gray?
That's the public agency and utility exception. And that was the one that I said was grayed out because we were going to send the draft back to the folks who participated in the forum before we brought it forward. Yeah. But this was, it's attached to this conversation that they had. Now, there's a couple pages where there are no maps provided. But I think in our earlier discussions, we got to look at them.
Yeah, I think the ones that are attached to the comp plan packet are generally the maps.
Kind of the big picture maps.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Right, yeah.
Okay, any further business that, looks like our agenda is completed. Anything else for the, needs to come up today? Okay, I adjourn this meeting.